Thank you.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for viewing and joining us for the March 17th regular meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We want to encourage everyone to please keep up the efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19 in Arcata. We know that by wearing masks and practicing social distancing, we can reduce the spread and keep our businesses open. Please support our businesses by masking up in Arcata. Now, if you wish to make public comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you were logged onto the Zoom meeting webinar, click on Raise Your Hand on the right-hand side of your screen. When it is your time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, the clerk will unmute you. You will then have two minutes to comment. The other way to access this meeting is by phone. You can call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. You can then press *9 on your phone, and this will raise your hand. When it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted, and you will have two minutes to comment. Now, if you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Pereira?
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
All present.
Great, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have our annual report from the Economic Development Committee to be presented by Economic Development Committee Chair Meredith Matthews. Meredith here?
Yep, she is here. And Meredith, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself? Perfect.
Hi, everybody, how are you? Good to be here. So, the Economic Development Committee meets the first Tuesday of each month at 5:00 in the city council chambers. And I feel like I need to mention that due to the pandemic for several months, we were not meeting, and then just recently started meeting remotely. And so, the goals of the Economic Development Committee is to serve as an advisory capacity to the council, commissions, or city staff as appropriate in matters pertaining to economic development, including but not limited to manufacturing, retail, tourism, business expansion, and revitalization in agriculture, to make recommendations to the Community Development Agency Board with respect to plans, projects, and proposals affecting the redevelopment project area within the scope of the redevelopment plan, and to review the economic trends and to make recommendations to strengthen the economic well-being of the city. And so, I'll briefly go over some of the accomplishments that we accomplished this year. In the 2020 calendar, we oriented multiple new members on city goals and objectives, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, Economic Development Committee role, Brownout Policies regarding member communication, and Economic Development Committee history. We discussed community vision, goals, and priorities, and potential projects such as a study of business needs, a business directory, asset mapping, and use of the Arcata Business License database to communicate with businesses. We've had several presentations, some by Joellen Clark Peterson and Brian Wilkman with the Chamber of Commerce. Received a presentation on the city's strategic infill plan. We formed a Business of the Year Subcommittee with the city council to recognize Cathay Brio as City of Arcata 2020 Business of the Year Award. We received and reviewed local employment and sales tax data, received communication from staff on this Arcata Strategic Arts Plan, and many others. I'm sure you have the report out in front of you, so... Do you want me to read the whole thing? I'm sorry, this is my first time presenting as the chair of this committee, so I'm just not sure if you want me to read the whole thing or just summarize.
Well, first of all, you're doing great as chair, thank you. And I think it's really your discretion. You know, the public is following along, so any highlights you think are worth mentioning are definitely appropriate to do that.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, so we've received a presentation on Living Locally by Jane Woodward. We discussed ways the committee can participate in the existing economic development groups and to assist the business community, received an orientation on city council goals and the Community Development Department work plan, and discussed the focus of the committee. I'll just say that we had almost 100% turnover in this new year, so we have a strong and full new committee that is very passionate and involved, so I'm really looking forward to 2021. So, our goals for 2021 is to support the strategic infill development, assist in the evaluation of the opportunities and constraints regarding commercial and industrial lands for their highest and best use, and review and develop recommendations on future commercial and industrial target markets. As far as business support, we want to develop strategies for business development and entrepreneurial support based on an increasingly challenging commuter consumer base and ongoing COVID-19 restrictions. We want to create and support opportunities to address the needs of the local and regional businesses, communities such as changes in consumer base, retail sales, and ecotourism, plaza events that support public safety, economic development, and community-based events, to support the city's sustainable community values, zero waste, greenhouse gas reduction, energy independence, active and alternative transportation modes, open space and ecosystem, diverse, affordable housing, commercial and industrial spaces, incubator cooperatives, small housing, commercial and office spaces, and lastly, but not least, the community arts program. Thank you guys very much for having me here, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much. Let me now check in with the council to see if there's any questions. We'll start with Councilmember Schaefer.
No further questions, but thank you for being here, Meredith, and for giving us this update, and I know that you guys are putting in a lot of effort right now to help Arcata recover, like many of us are, so that's very exciting to hear everything going on with you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Goldstein?
No questions, but thank you so much, I appreciate all your hard work, and it's good to see you, so thank you.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
No, just thank you for all of your hard work, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And Vice Mayor Watson?
Same, no questions, and really appreciate all the work by the committee, thanks a lot.
Absolutely.
Great, well, let's see, do we have any members of the public wanting to comment on this item?
We do have one hand raised, Anne, were you wanting to comment on this item? Or is that for later?
I just wanted to make a public comment about an item not on the agenda, I'm a little...
Okay, that is actually coming up next, it'll be just a moment, okay? Thank you. No other public comment, Mayor?
Okay, great, thank you. Well, Madam Chair, thank you so much for your time and for all the work the committee's doing. Look forward to hearing from you again.
Absolutely.
Take care. Okay, and next on our agenda is early oral communications. This 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters not on tonight's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom, or press *9 if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. And it sounds like we might have some public comment, so we'll turn it over to you, Dana.
We do, Mayor. Our first public comment will be from Anne, please go ahead, Anne.
Hello, I'm Dr. Anne Lindsay, and I'm president of the Board of Life Care Humboldt, which is a nonprofit formed to plan, build, and support a senior life plan community in Humboldt County. Life Care Humboldt will provide seniors secure, accessible homes with support as they age, and will open up housing stock, provide local jobs at all levels, and keep valued and loved people close to their friends and families. We're planning a campus-like residential setting with private residences for independent living, assisted living units, and memory care homes. Life Care residents will not have to move if they or their partners need increased care. We're planning on having common social areas, open space in areas to enjoy nature and garden. We actually hope to partner with a farmer on three to four acres to supply the community with fresh produce, much like Mad River Hospital does on its campus. So, we need 15 acres to build this campus, and we've done an extensive property search and narrowed our choices down to two properties. One is the McKinleyville Town Center, and the other is in Arcata. So, we're talking with Danko about building Life Care Humboldt in the area known as Creekside Homes in Arcata. We would replace Danko's project that has pre-zoning approved by the City of Arcata. Now, we feel our values are good fit for Arcata as independence, community, lifelong learning, healthful lifestyle, wellness, personal and financial security, environmental sustainability, culture, inclusiveness, and fun. And there isn't any community like this within 200 miles, so we've lost valuable residents who've moved to have this type of living situation. So, I would welcome the opportunity in the future to make a scheduled presentation of Life Care Humboldt to the council, but now if you want to learn more, you can visit our website, lifecarehumboldt.org, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne. Our next speaker is a call-in user one, please go ahead. Can you unmute yourself, phone caller?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead, you'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Lee Torrance, and I'm calling to ask what the City of Arcata is planning on doing with that 1 million-square-foot mega cannabis grow that's going in in my neighborhood, in Sun Valley Bulb Farms? I'm wondering if you guys are against that, and I also wonder if the county planners have, like, do they trump your decisions or your wishes? That, oh, should I keep going? I don't get an answer, okay. Well, they've been sneaking these large, stinking, noisy, glowing-in-the-night grows under people's noses all over the county, and this is in what the city plan is, it's a green zone, it's in the sphere of influence, it borders, well, there's three or four schools within a mile radius of it, feet from it, actually, and I'm wondering about allergies, and, I mean, I have bad allergies, and obviously, a plant as strong as cannabis is going to affect people. People in Santa Barbara had put it into their area without them knowing, and now they're suffering with scratchy throats, headaches, nausea, watery eyes, things like that, and other people, there's somebody on Elk River Road in Eureka, and he had one, just two hoop houses put in near him, and he can't even go outside because of the noise from the fans. And we're going to have 192 hoop houses, you know, 2,000 feet from my house, and, you know, where I used to be able to hear the ocean at night, now we're going to have a constant roar of fans. You've got 192 hoop houses times two fans. How much noise is that going to produce?
Thank you so much for your comments, I'm sorry your time's up.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, the next caller or next speaker is Angela, please go ahead, Angela, you'll have two minutes.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Angela Pay, and less than 50 paces from the Arcata City Hall is my place of employment at Polly Shaw Insurance Agency. I'm here today to share some safety concerns. Before I get to the heart of my voice here today, I'd like to share some of the influences that two minutes will allow about the leadership of our insurance agency, Jeff and Tanya Polly, and the ways that they contribute to the Arcata community. They have fundraised for local families whose children were injured in car accidents, they've donated to the Arcata Bottom 4H, Arcata FFA, Arcata Playhouse, Life Care Humboldt, Arcata High Safe and Sober Food for People, Greenview Playground, North Coast Growers, Mad River Alliance, Pacific Union School, the Arcata Chamber of Commerce. If there's a local nonprofit with a barbecue or an auction to fundraise, Jeff and Tanya Polly are participating. During the season of COVID, Jeff Polly has gone around to the Arcata local restaurants and businesses and purchased gift cards to give away to employees and friends so that these businesses can keep their doors open. Over the past couple of years, our agency staff has made numerous disturbance calls to the Arcata Police Department for various reasons, including transient encampments in our office alcoves, people pooping and peeing outside of our office doors, peering into our employees' private office windows, stealing property from our front office workstation. Almost all female staff has been solicited, witnessed head bashing by male wanderers on Arcata sidewalks, performing sexual acts on themselves on city sidewalks, and had garbage tossed on us during lunchtime walks. But the granddaddy of all of the awful things that we see at our agency, just 50 paces from the Arcata City Hall occurred last Friday when our boss, Jeff Polly, went outside of our office to ask an individual to clean up the mess that he had made in front of our office. What Jeff Polly encountered that day was a horrific stab wound that thankfully did not take his life. I'm not going to pretend what it takes to run a city, I can't pretend to know life for our wife.
I'm so sorry, your two minutes up, and I thank you so much for taking the time to speak with us.
The homeless are winning.
Angela, thank you for your time and for your comments, and we wish Jeff a speedy recovery. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, our fourth speaker is Karen, can you go ahead, please, Karen?
Yes. I would like to say that I absolutely agree with the woman talking about how ghastly it will be to look out and hear the large, large grow that is expected to happen. It's absolutely not the wonderful, high-end, small farm weed that we had all hoped Humboldt would be famous for, as it has been. But I actually wanted to say that those people should enlist the help of Judith Mayer, because Dr. Mayer is brilliant. When I spoke today in our successful reconsideration at the LAFCO meeting to have our land not be annexed against our wishes, I was able to use Dr. Mayer's words. She was at the Planning Commission last week, she explained that there were serious problems with the situs process in dealing with LAFCO. Everything that she said was absolutely what made it possible for, I believe me, to make a coherent description of what was going on. And so, I just think that you're very, very lucky that you have her. She said that the meeting was the first since the January 21st meeting, that David Loyell wanted approval of the general plan APR. Judith Mayer wanted to have the disconnect between the city and LAFCO to be included in the growth development section. She said the progress report should reflect the inadequacies, that there were serious problems with the process, where the city asked for a small 21-acre annexation, and LAFCO returned with one three times that size. She talked of the quote glitch, she said they agreed to a quote "trust me" approach.
Karen, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Sean, please go ahead, Sean.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sean Armstrong, I am a proudly pro-development, pro-affordable-housing consultant here in town. So, I wanted to just explain that I've lost confidence in the general plan team, having participated in general plans, having been part of the many other general plans throughout the country now. That's because we were deliberately, as neighbors, kept unaware from April through November, and actually all the way to December 30th, when the notice was sent out, that we were not, that we're being annexed and we're not going to be told. I want to quote from a Freedom of Information Act email I have here, from Dilo Friedas, who wrote, "Good morning, Chris and Haley, David has reviewed the application, I have the deposit check from you, but I don't think I ever got the landowner consent to boundary change back from you." That's November 17th, but she explains that she's not informed Chris Dart of Danko that they have expanded the annexation boundary and then charged them to Plan West, who collects the money for the addendum that is done to the EIR. Then Marc Andre writes on the 21st, still in the comment period, "Why would this city annex this ag land that is in the Western Green Belt that Colette and David and Dilo do not respond to?" Next email, Dilo says, "Hey, for this January 5th meeting, no need to include Marc, as he's retiring tomorrow, doesn't request that Julie come or anybody else, no one gets to come to this meeting in which they discuss the modified annexation boundary that Marc Andre has protested." Then Colette Metz of Plan West, acting as LAFCO says, she writes on January 15th, five days before this secret meeting here, we're having our secret annexation, she says, "I haven't heard from Sean Armstrong about the noticed and modified boundary, let me know if you have his email handy." Dilo Friedas responds, "We do have his email, but please hold off on using until David gives the okay, just want to play it safe in this case." This is why I don't have trust. You know, Mayor Michael Winkler says to me, his business partner, "I was unaware of any proposal to annex your land as of January 30th."
Sean, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, I'm really disturbed, I hope you are too.
Thank you, Sean, thank you.
Okay, and speaker number six is Morgan, please go ahead, Morgan, you'll have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name is Morgan King, I've been a resident of Arcata for 20 years, and as you probably know, tomorrow at 6:00, the Humboldt County Planning Commission is holding a public hearing on the Arcata land company proposal to construct a 23-acre commercial cannabis operation in the, excuse me, Arcata Bottoms, which is, you know, located just about a mile from the Arcata Plaza, and I expect that you all are pretty familiar with it, so I don't need to go into the details of the significant negative social and environmental and even traffic impacts that this project might have, not just on humans, but our non-human communities that live in its proximity. But I do want to say this, I live with my family on Roberts Way, which is about 1,700 feet from this proposed project site, and I, like my neighbors, utilize Ennis Park and the field that is soon to be the Ennis Park Extension. From that park in our neighborhood, we can currently hear the Sun Valley Bulb Farm, whether it's radios blaring, the rumbling of heavy equipment, horns blaring, all those things, we can hear it, and at night, there are security lighting glares from across the field, and the lights in their greenhouses has a low-lying glow on the clouds and the fog. And being to the east of their operation, we are concerned about pesticide drift into our neighborhood, but we still enjoy the amazing diversity and abundance of bird life in the park, chorus of frogs, we can hear the ocean, and when conditions are right, the lack of life pollution lets us stargaze, but I, like many Arcadians, fear that this quality of life, not just for us, but for local flora and fauna, will end if this project is approved as proposed. I also fear that, you know, in this time of climate crisis, this project is going to...
Morgan, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I think we have time for one more speaker?
Yes. Okay. Rebecca, please go ahead, Rebecca.
Thank you, my name is Rebecca Crowe, I'd like to thank my neighbors Lee and Morgan for calling in, I'm also calling in regarding the Arcata Land Company's conditional use permit that's up for the Humboldt County Planning Commission tomorrow night. I'd like to thank the City of Arcata for providing responses in the MND and request that you follow up to ensure that your comments are appropriately addressed. I am concerned that there will be permanent loss of ag land, currently that site is running pasture and crop, different crops, they're proposing to essentially permanently put greenhouses on it. I think that's, I've got really concerns with that and interference with the City of Arcata's Western Green Belt, essentially 15 acres of ag are going to be lost. And that's also an area that we're seeing sea level rise, so concerned that the project is not appropriately accounted for seawater intrusion with the increases of sea level in conjunction with the high volume of pumping, we're concerned that they have not actually calculated those volumes correctly. They also incorrectly state that the City of Arcata's water line can be used as backup. We're also, as Morgan started to mention, really concerned about the climate impacts, the greenhouse gas emissions, you know, they calculate greenhouse gas from what they'll be putting off from their facility, we're also losing 15 acres of ag land that currently acts as a carbon sink for greenhouse gases, so it's just not the greenhouse gases they're producing, it's also the loss of those fields as a carbon sink. We are in effectively a low-income community, this project disproportionately affects seniors, children, there's three low-income housing facilities, it will reduce the value of our homes here, my neighbor is the mortgage underwriter, this will have to be disclosed, so really would appreciate if the City of Arcata would continue to follow up on this so that it does not negatively impact your city, your community members, and our Western Green Belt, and thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, so that's the end of our early oral communications. I did want to ask our city manager, just to give a brief update on what we have weighed in on regarding what's on the Planning Commission agenda for the county tomorrow.
Yeah, the city received a referral on this property, I think it's close to two years ago, I could pull it up, and I do believe the council has all received copies of that. It was a quick turnaround time when we received that referral, so staff pulled comments together based on our general plan policies and land use policies at that time, and commented on wanting to understand more about drainage, what their plans are for water, traffic impacts, traffic circulation plans in that area, lighting, especially night lighting for grows that would have, you know, actual lit enclosures, and what they would be doing for night sky compliance. I believe, as I recall, most of our questions were prior to a bulk of their environmental review and analysis that was completed, and so we have, subsequent to that, seen pieces of that letter addressed in the environmental documents, and believe that they'll be laying out that argument before the Planning Commission tomorrow night, and we'll continue to follow that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't know if you would like to explain, we did have beyond the seven of public comment, if we wanted to explain the other opportunity for them?
Absolutely, so we will have a second open early, sorry, a second oral communications portion later in this meeting, after, I believe it's our new, let's see, would it be after? Let's see, it'll be after hazard pay for grocery workers, it's item 11, oral and written communication, so for those that did not get an opportunity in the first 15-minute early oral communications period, there will be another opportunity, and of course, for those that are here for a particular agenda item, there will be public comment on those agenda items as well. Okay, thank you, everyone. Next, we have consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So now I'll go through and read through the items. Item A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of March 3rd, 2021. B, biweekly report on general warrants. C, award a multi-year contract for a bike share program to Tandem Mobility LLC for up to $26,250 per program year. Authorize the city engineer to increase the amount by up to $8,750 for a total of $35,000 to allow for installation of an additional bike station if funding becomes available, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. D, award a construction contract for the 2021 manhole rehabilitation, rebid project to H&R Plumbing and Drain Cleaning Incorporated, doing business as H&R Underground, in the amount of $106,015. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $21,203. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to twenty-one thousand, two hundred and three dollars, twenty percent for a total of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary. And authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. E, reappoint Dennis Halligan, Ken Hoffman, and Jack Naylor to the Forest Management Committee for three-year terms ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And reappoint Deborah Coles, Sheldon Heath, and Stephen Martin to the Parks and Recreation Committee for three-year terms ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And reappoint Bob Brown, Chris McAuliffe, and Jean-Jacques Murphy to the Wetlands and Creeks Committee for three-year terms ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. F, reappoint Michael Moore and Dave Ryan to the Transportation Safety Committee for three-year terms ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. G, reappoint Dan Tagney, Jean Barso, and Kimberly White to the Planning Commission for four-year terms expiring March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And lastly, H, authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for Humboldt State University's proposal to become a polytechnic university. Is there any council member that would like to remove an item for separate discussion? Okay, is there any member of the public or staff that would like to pull an item for separate discussion?
We have a phone caller with ending in eight, two, six, one. Was your hand raised to pull an item off the consent calendar? Hello?
Oh, hello. No, I don't have a comment on this. I have a comment on a different item. I'm waiting until eleven, so forgive me. I had my hand raised earlier. And I'll, I'll, I will mute myself back and then come back later when you, you have public comment.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I've moved to approve the consent calendar.
There, a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I will call the vote by roll call. Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we are on to new business. Item A, receive an update on the city's planned rental inspection program and provide feedback or direction to staff as necessary to modify the program. And may I have a staff report from city engineer country? Please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, and member of public. I'm here today to give you a quick overview and highlight some of the key elements of our planned rental inspection program. As you know, this program is, is in the city council goal from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And we've been working on this. Before I go further, I would just want to give more credit to our building official and Nelson, who worked on this. I'm just presenting his work, so I don't want to take a credit for the work he has done. So he did a lot of legwork on this. So, uh, as you know, we have like a more than four thousand residential parcel in the city of Arcata. And out of that, two thousand plus parcels are not owner occupied. So it makes critical to have our rental inspection program in the city. The goal of the program is to ensure all the rental units in the city limits are in compliance with health and safety standards. And this program is only applicable to long-term rental units only. So which means it's not for short-term rentals and Airbnbs, just for long-term rental units, I would say more than thirty days of. One of the critical goal of the program is to ensure all the property owners who rent the property in the city of Arcata are registered with the city of Arcata. To start the program, we will use information from the county access office to ensure all the landowners within the rental unit are registered with the city. You know, there is a program, so there will be some fees. So initially, based on the number of parcel units we have in the city, we are proposing having an annual registration fee for each parcel in the amount of forty-five dollars. And I'll go over Y forty-five and inspection fee also associated with that. And we are proposing to have inspection fee of seventy dollars per parcel. And if there's additional inspection needed, it will be charged per hour. So how the inspection program will work? Once the property is registered with the city, we will schedule an inspection. We have prepared an inspection checklist, which is similar to the one prepared by CDPG or other state funding agencies when they fund their rental inspection program. So we have that form, then we will use that form as a basis to inspect the property. If the property is in good stance, you know, they will get a certificate. If they are in, not in good stand, we will give them thirty days to come in compliance. And sometimes it, it could be more than thirty days. So after that, if they come back and they will call us, make an appointment, and we will re-inspect. If it's in compliance, we will issue a certificate. So currently, we are working on issuing a certificate which will be valid for three to five years. We have not said it will be a three or five years. We are still debating on that. So people like to get some feedback on that. Also, we have a, as you know, um, most of the owners will not want to have a city to do the inspection. So we do have a self-certification program associated with that. So what will happen is, once the property is registered and there are no violations in the property and our city inspector does the inspection, that property will automatically qualify for a self-certification program. And that self-certification program will be again, be for at least for three to five years. And we are deciding on that. And you will keep on hearing three to five years, because we are still debating for how long we should keep that three or five years. So what does, what does that mean, the self-certification program? What does that mean is now the owner can perform self-inspection. They can fill out their own form and keep in the file. Owner will require to do that annually or upon change of any tenants. Owner will keep those inspection checklists at least for three to five years. And upon the request from the city, they will show that they are in compliance. Also, city will not schedule any inspection for those properties which have good compliance for self-certification program. For some of the qualified participants, the number of inspection will be limited to twenty percent of the total units. So for some, for example, you know, some units, some of the apartments, there are like a hundred units. So we will not ask the owner to inspect all of them. They can just pick twenty percent of that and then keep those record in the file. To be eligible for the self-certification program, the property shall not have any kind of violation in three to five years. We have also built up a random inspection program for the self-certification, for the self-certified properties. So what that means is, um, city will inspect ten percent of the self-certified properties annually just to verify the properties are maintained in good standards and they don't have any violations. If the property, you know, they are maintaining an inspection passes and they will stay on the filter bad list. And if they don't, then they will be out of the list and city will do the inspection and they will charge fees for the inspection services. There are some exemption on the program. So as I said, this is only for the long-term rental properties. It's not for the short-term rental properties or Airbnbs. This is not for the units that were constructed in the last three to five years, which is, which is a new unit. So we don't need to have a rental inspection program for that. We will just issue a certificate for them once we know they were built in last three to five years. And now mobile homes are also exempt from this. And also the historic designated structures are exempt from this. There are other elements like, you know, local contacts. So as you know, most of the property owners, they don't live in area. They're out of area, out of state sometimes, sometime out of country. So we don't expect them to be here for the inspection. So they can authorize a property manager, their relative, our friend, our tenant to attend the inspection with us and allow the city to respond with that. And we do have a form for that and we can work with the owner on that. Also, uh, Arcata Fire Department, they have currently inspection program also in place, which is for more like life and safety inspection that they do annually for some of the residential units and more like commercial units. The residential unit that they inspect is have, would have number of residential units more than three. And their inspection is mainly for, I say, life and safety. And our rental inspection program is much focused on health and safety. Because the fire department, they just look for the smoke alarms, sprinkler system, access, and that kind of activities. But we will be much more on the health and safety side of the inspection work. So, uh, you know, rental inspection program, uh, it needs staff to do the work. Currently, the way our staff is in the building division, we don't have staff to run the inspection program and do the inspection work. So currently, based on amount of work, uh, we anticipate we will need one full-time a code compliance officer or an inspector to run the program, do the inspection work. Currently, we expect the cost is in the range of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And that will include one full-time salary and then some other admin support from other city departments. So what is our next steps with this? You know, our goal is to get some feedback from you on the program if you want to modify or add more element to it. Find like the draft document, you know, conduct outreach and reach out to the property owners. Try to do at least one or two Zoom meetings with them, try to get some feedback from the property owners, incorporate those comments. And make a final draft ordinance in support with our city attorney. And bring back a draft ordinance and a program for your review or for consideration. And if you like the program, then we can implement it. Our goal is to do this in next three to four months. And our hope is maybe end of this year, we will be able to have the program in place. The ultimate goal of the program is, once the program is running, people who wants to rent the property in the city, they will be able to see if the property they are looking for, that have our rental inspection program certification or not. So they will know the quality of the unit they are renting. So with that, that's just a quick overview of that, you know? Please feel free to ask questions and feedback. And I'm here to answer questions. If I'm not able to answer, I'll come back and provide more information in future.
Great, thank you. I'll now ask for questions from the council, starting with Councilmember Goldstein.
Uh, thank you so much. I really appreciate you giving us this report and explaining the program. I'm really excited about this. I think it's really necessary. And so I'm really looking forward to seeing, you know, after we give comments today, seeing it again and hopefully moving quickly forward with it. I do have a couple of comments and questions, things that I was hoping to see revised and then a few things that I would like a little bit of clarification on. One thing, I think that while I'm really excited about most of what's in this, something that I'm having a bit of concern around is the self-certification. I'm trying to think of how to put this delicately. We have some really wonderful landlords in Arcata. We also have some really terrible landlords in Arcata that, and as you said, many don't even live here, um, not part of our community. And so I don't know from the community, my own personal lived experience, you know, as a college student. I happen to be very lucky with my landlord right now. But I, you know, I was a young college student renting different places at times. And, um, the extensive community conversations I've had with people who have lived in really substandard conditions here in Arcata. I don't think I feel comfortable with a self-certification program. Just because it just doesn't feel like enough accountability to me. I think I'd like to see a little more intervention in all cases on the city's part. And a real assurance that there is accountability for, for landlords that aren't taking this seriously and aren't providing safe and healthy places for people to live. Let's see, I also was wondering if it'd be possible to get a list of, um, like the, the, what would be enforced? What would be on that list? And like what the violations would be if we could take a look at that at some point. And then, um, let's see, oh, if a property is inspected and found to not be in good standing. I know you said there is about thirty days to comply. What, if that unit is currently being rented and there are tenants living there, what is the responsibility of the landlord? To like, how are those tenants taken care of?
It's on case-by-case basis. I'll just answer that what I know from experience. If we find, for example, there was a case maybe a few months ago when we got a complaint from one of the tenants that the units are not in good shape. It's owner's responsibility to provide them place to stay, I would say, at least a motel or a hotel. So until the time they fix that unit and they can come back after it's safe to be there. It's owner's responsibility. It's, I don't think it's written in their contract, but I think that's how it should be. But in this case, she went to her friend's house and she had a friend nearby, so she was able to go there. But we can include that in our inspection program, how that should be addressed.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I would love to see that included, just some level of guidance that guarantees tenants won't be living on the street or stranded if their unit is deemed inhabitable for a period of time. That would be really great. And then, um, I, oh, um, I think that you were, you were saying about twenty percent would be if they owned many units, that it would be about twenty percent. And I, to me, that feels a little bit low, um, especially because, uh, I don't know, certain, certain things break down. Certain units can get more moldy than others. Um, I think I'd like to see a higher percentage there. I do understand not making every single unit have to be inspected. You know, I'm, I, I want to be, you know, considerate to all parties involved, but twenty percent feels a little bit low to me. And then my last comment was just that you had mentioned getting owner feedback in the process. I would also encourage reaching out and having a listening session with tenants in the community. I've had a lot of great community conversations and people sharing truly awful experiences of renting in Arcata. And I think having their voices heard is really, really important. That's, I think, all for me. Thank you so much. I really, really appreciate your work on this. I'm really looking forward to seeing the next round. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Goldstein. Councilmember Schaefer.
Um, yeah, thank you so much, Natra, for bringing this to us. And I guess my, and I don't know, kind of two-part question or just an elaboration. Could you just elaborate, I guess, a little bit more on the self-certification and what that would include? Like, are you hiring your own building inspector that's approved by the city? Or what does that look like? Or are you just doing it yourself? And then kind of going with that, I guess, is how can we make sure that people are actually, you know, getting the certificate and registering? Because I know, you know, there's a lot of people that just kind of rent privately under the table month to month, not, you know, an entire through, through a management company or anything like that. So, you know, they could probably fly for a while with, you know, discreet tenants, you know, without alerting the city, basically, unless there was an issue. So I, I guess my main question is, how can we make sure, you know, people who are renting their places are actually, you know, within our system and getting inspected?
So I think we will start with the first list, as I stated, like from Humboldt County's access office. It gives the owner occupied parcels versus non-owner occupied parcels. So we will have a list that we know that's been rented, but our essential parcel has been rented, so we will know the list. Second, on the self-certification, uh, we went around and around on how to do that. Because definitely there, in some cases, it's difficult to, I don't want to put the word on the way trust, but also we cannot inspect every single property. So to cover that, uh, we could start with inspecting prop, each property before putting them on the self-certification. City inspector will inspect the properties and once they are, they pass, then only they will be able to be on the self-certification list. And then we also have a catch program like for ten percent random check for the self-certification every year that, and they will be caught in that process also.
Great, thank you. Yeah, um, no other questions. That makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
I had some of the same questions, but those are getting answered. So I think with the clarification on the self, um, the self-certification, it makes sense to me if they've, if they've already passed before and they're in good standing to be able to do that. So that clarification is fine for me. And then on the number of units, um, I don't necessarily have a problem with twenty percent, but I was wondering, I'm assuming, and I would hope it would be this way, that we would get to, the city would get to pick the twenty percent? Like, they're not going to tell us, you know, here's the, here's our twenty percent?
It was not, not planned that way, but yes, it makes sense and we will have city pick the twenty percent or whatever percentage we decide.
And that was all. Thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Watson.
Yeah, thanks for all the work you put into this. Um, I appreciate the simplicity of it. And, uh, I don't know, I guess I have mixed feelings on the self-certification. I mean, I feel like, uh, I kind of suspect part of the motivation was to keep the cost down on the city side as well. I mean, I feel like, I kind of suspect part of the motivation was to keep the cost down on the city side as well. I imagine that if we had to inspect all those properties of it, I saw the budget impact here listed. And that would significantly increase our budget impact. We have to hire additional inspectors. So I just think that's, we decide that we want to not do the self-inspection or modify it, that we just keep that in mind when we have a lot of other projects. You know, we might want to have room in the budget for. But yeah, again, I appreciate the simplicity of it. And for the most part, I agree with everyone's comments. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Let's see, yeah, I think with the self-certification, I agree. I think having folks be inspected first and verified by city staff before entering self-certification, I think, does make sense. Understanding that that does mean there's a, you know, more upfront staff effort and time that goes into that. But hopefully that's considered an investment where we can have confidence in the self-certification program going forward. And really verifying those that are, you know, those that are great landlords and are really doing what's best for, for their tenants and for this community. So definitely, you know, want us to have faith in those that truly are doing the right thing and taking care of their properties as well. I, I do agree with Councilmember Goldstein about just clarifying, I think, for the community. At the point where if we do move forward with this, explaining, I think, having obviously this communicated on the website, what the rental inspection program will be important. But I think also making that connection to what are the tenants' rights? Is there a specific phone number that they can call to, you know, express these by, you know, these violations if they see them? And I think just clarifying to tenants what their rights are if it is in fact found that they are in, in a, in a property that is not compliant. I, I think, especially before someone files a complaint, I think it is fair for them to know what are the consequences of that? You know, if someone's worried that if I put in this complaint, that I'm now going to get kicked, kicked out and not have a place to live while they rectify this issue. I think that's just something for us to keep in mind about the community education piece. Just so the tenants know that this program is really meant to, to, to serve them too. And that we're not trying to leave them high and dry if there's a violation that they're dealing with.
Can I have one more?
Oh, go.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'd also be interested to know how we would decide where to start, I guess. And I guess a timeline, how, how long it would take if we did self-certification or if we decided not to do a self-certification.
Okay, thank you. And then just one other thing, I, I just wanted to give credit, Councilmember Patino, who's no longer on the council. This is something that he advocated for long before I was even on the council. It's something that we worked on together. And I just want to give credit where it's due to him, that he, he really has been a champion for this. And I think it's just a reminder of the work that we do. Sometimes it happens long be, long after we, you know, or shortly after we're, you know, our time on the council. I just want to recognize him. I'm sure he's enjoying a nice evening at home, not watching this meeting. But I just want to give credit to him for being an advocate for this as well. Because it definitely is a team effort to get this across the finish line. Do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item?
A reminder.
Go ahead, Tannet.
A reminder for attendees that if you wish to comment on this item, to please use the raise your hand option. Or if you're on the phone, to press star nine.
And while we're waiting for public comment, just a couple of concepts. And Natra, please do correct me if, if I'm, if the program has changed since I read through it in more detail. But I don't think the expectation was to ever allow self-certification right out of the gate. It was really only to allow self-certification of those properties that passed. And to some discretion to this building inspector position that if somebody passed with flying colors, they might be able to move straight into self-certification. If somebody had, was pretty abominable and it took them a long time and now they're in compliance, it doesn't mean they get a three to five-year pass. At that point, they'll probably be on an annual inspection until we see improvement. So I think there does need to be some discretion built in based on the types of violations that we see. And I think to answer Councilmember Goldstein's question about what happens to the tenant, it does, I think tremendously depend on the type of improvement. We have had a situation, we had an electrical situation that our building inspector felt was extremely dangerous for the people to stay in that unit even another night. And state law then does require property owners to provide up to two months of lodging for that individual. If, if because of a health and safety hazard that's severe enough for the building inspector to remove them from the house that night occurs in that unit. If it's something that they can easily fix while the tenant is in the plate, you know, still living in, in the unit. And that's agreeable to all parties, then, you know, that has also been allowed. And I just want to make sure, just because this is a good opportunity for public engagement, that this program, one, I think, will really heighten the city's commitment to rental inspection and to the quality of rentals in Arcata. And it will also make it easier for people to call in and get an inspection when they need it. So if you are living in abominable conditions as a renter in Arcata, we do want you to call the building department right now. We do go out and inspect those properties right now. So, but having this program in place, I think, will really just strengthen the response that the city can provide to those properties. And it will hopefully strengthen the understanding in the community that you should call. So I think, don't hesitate to call now and certainly don't hesitate to call if you're in a unit that ends up on self-inspection because they started really strong. Maybe even changed hands in that timeframe and the city's not aware that the property sold and is deteriorating quickly. So it doesn't look like we have public comment.
I just have maybe a few responses to a few other questions, you know, that you asked. On the checklist, so we do have a checklist and we'll share with you in the next round that what all items are in the checklist. So we, we already have prepared the form for that, we'll share with you on that. On the budget, I just want to, again, stress on that is based on currently number of units we have or the rental units we have in the city. If everybody comes to the city and registered and they pay their annual due, that, and with some inspection, that will fund the program. The way it's put together right now, it's like a annual registration fee of per parcel, forty-five dollars and inspection. You don't have to do a lot of inspection in a year, but if we end up doing at least hundred inspection or hundred and fifty inspection on top of annual registration, that will cover the cost of new staff. So that was one of the question. And then we will, we do plan to have a website with all the tenants' rights on California tenants' rights handbook, rights and responsibilities of the residents, top ten rental housing violations. What are those? So we will have educational information on our website once we implement the program. And there was a question on where to start. We will start the program with the list that we will get from Humboldt County Access Office. And that has a, who owns the property, who doesn't. So we'll start from the place where people don't own the property and we'll go and start contacting those property owners and ask them to register. And, you know, I'm not sure how far we will go. Currently, we do plan to send a letter and registration form to all those addresses. It could cost money initially, but I think that will help us to get more registration in, in the first six months of the program. And then timeline, you know, as I said, there are at least more than two thousand rental units in Arcata and it will be hard to inspect all in a one year. So it will take at least two to three years to inspect all that through the city inspector. So it will take at least, I would say, three, I'm being optimistic, it could be four years, depending on the violations and paperwork involved and all the process. So I believe I answered most of the questions, but if not, please feel free to ask any questions you have. And thank you all for the comments also. I think there were some of the items that we overlooked and we will address those in the next round.
Okay, thank you. And it sounds like there was no public comment on this.
Yeah, let's just double check. I saw a hand come up and down, so it's down now, just confirming we do not have any public comment on this item. Okay, it looks like we do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just, I guess a question is, do we need to make a motion on this? Or do you feel you have direction in terms of, in general, what to bring back to us?
Yes, I do have a clear direction on what to bring back when I come next back with an update and more information on the program.
Okay. Let's see, are there any final comments from the council before we move on? Okay, well, thank you, Natra, and a big thank you to Nelson as well for all, your guys' work on it. Really looking forward to it. So before we move on to item B, consider hazard pay for grocery workers, I'm going to request that we take a quick five-minute break and then, and then come back. So let's take a quick five-minute break and then we'll, we'll start with item B. Thank you. So we'll return at seven oh five. Okay, let's see if the rest of the council is back. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. We're back from our five-minute break. So next on our agenda is item B for new business, consider hazard pay for grocery workers. May I have a staff report from city manager Deemer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. The item before you tonight is to consider hazard pay or premium pay. The request is for grocery store, what they call public-facing employees. And it appears, just in sort of quick research, this item did come up pretty quickly last week, that there are at least, if not at least eight other cities in the state of California that have considered and most of them have adopted hazard, emergency hazard pay ordinances between kind of January and March of this year. And while they do differ and the staff report kind of looks through how they might differ, in essence, they all have some of the same basic obligations. They impose pay eligibility to what they consider pay-eligible workers, an additional amount per hour. So it ranges from the lowest I've seen, I think, was three dollars an hour. And the highest that I've seen is five dollars an hour for those employees that are eligible. The ordinance is also prohibit retaliation against workers asserting their rights under the ordinance. And requires the business owners to maintain records that demonstrate compliance. And the staff report lists several examples that we found from the city of Long Beach, Oakland, Montebello and San Mateo. And on all of those, the requirement was for grocery stores and/or drugstores. One of them, I think it was Oakland, also included drugstores that had more than five hundred employees nationwide and fifteen hundred employees locally in the city where the ordinance was adopted. The size of the store in, so I wanted to talk through, this has come, this request came from a local grocery union. And the request before you tonight from them, and I believe they're here to speak of it. And so it perhaps has changed since the original correspondence around the item tonight. And so give them a chance to speak to that. But that the request originally was that it was for grocery stores only, that there was an initial ninety-day period, unless it was extended by the city or if the region moved into the yellow tier. And their request was that stores that employ five hundred or more nationwide and fifteen or more in Arcata would be required to pay four dollars an hour. And stores that employ twenty-five but less than five hundred people in Arcata would be required to pay three dollars an hour. So before you tonight is just a consideration, if this is an ordinance that the city is interested in moving forward with. The city attorney has not had any type of extensive opportunity to review the legal potential ramifications. I can share when we were doing research for the staff report tonight, that most of the cities that have enacted these ordinances at this point are under some level of litigation. And there have been some lower court decisions that have thrown out some sort of an immediate temporary restraining orders or, or ability for them to stop the ordinance from going into effect without going through the whole legal system. But there are still several legal cases that appear to be pending. And if this is something that the council is interested in moving forward with, city attorney is here tonight and can speak to this. But we do that level of research to bring back to you with the ordinance. So tonight, if you're interested in moving forward, we would like to know sort of the size, whether you want to do it by number of employees or square footage of the businesses to be subject to the ordinance. Identifying the type of businesses, they seem to predominantly be grocery only, but I did find one that also included large drugstores. Identify the amount of premium pay for either by size or just in general. Several of the programs that we've seen do provide credit if a store has voluntarily premium payments that are already instituted. So if there is a store in the region that is already paying, let's say, two dollars an hour, and the ordinance requires four dollars an hour, that that store would get credit for the two dollars an hour that they're already providing. And just be required to do the additional two dollars an hour. And then to identify the duration of the ordinance, we have seen them range from sixty days to a hundred and twenty days. And then staff would consider any legal research or if you have any specific questions on legal research that you would like the city attorney to do, we can bring that back to as well. I do believe, I didn't have it attached at the time of the staff report. Um, I do believe, I didn't have it attached at the time of the staff report, but I have seen correspondence of some draft ordinances that were provided. I have not had a chance to review those, uh, to see how they comport with other city ordinances at this point, but happy to answer questions that you might have about this item.
Thank you, Karen. Um, actually, before we open it up to questions from the council, I did want to ask the city attorney, to clarify, um, in an ordinance of this type, what we can and cannot consider in our deliberations for it. Um, what comes to mind is Arcata's Formula Restaurant Ordinance, for example, where we didn't consider ownership, um, of a business, but rather land use, um, components, the size, um, certain other characteristics, but not necessarily ownership. I, I just didn't know if that would be helpful, um, before we engage in the conversation of what, from a legal standpoint, is appropriate to consider or not consider, um, in section ordinance.
I, that is very interesting, what you bring up. The Formula Restaurant, um, ordinance was a, a land use standard, a land use regulation, and so that's why it was rooted in, uh, land use provisions and considerations. I have not seen land use come up as a consideration in the hazard pay ordinances. What I'm, what I am noticing, what I am seeing is that they are all based on, um, public health and safety issues that would be then citywide. Uh, if there are particular, you know, if this were a much bigger geographic area, there might be particular zones where, uh, land use or districts or areas could be differentially impacted. Um, but I, I think that's interesting. Um, I don't offhand know that that's a consideration. I will say, and I'm sorry, one last thing, and I will also say that, um, it's an evolving field. The, there have been a couple of, of well-thought-out judicial decisions that have come down, um, in the litigation that, um, will allow the litigation to evolve as well as the ordinances. Um, and a, as the litigation continues, there will be more clarification of what is and is not permissible.
Thank you, and forgive me, I, I wasn't necessarily trying to say that there was a peril, uh, saying that land use factored in here, but it reminded me of that particular policy, um, in terms of that there are certain things that couldn't be considered, um, in the deliberation from a legal standpoint of the legislative intent of the policy, and I just didn't know if there was any parallels in this case, given that there is a lot of litigation around it already active. If there was anything in your opinion that was important for us to consider, um, if not, I, I just wanted to bring it up before we had a discussion.
Well, one of the, um, I think the important distinctions that needs to be made, that is made by the courts, is that, um, the premium pay is not intended to mitigate for the fact that frontline workers are in a more, uh, dangerous environment. It is intended instead to compensate them for basically, um, working at, at higher risk. Um, so with that comes the consideration that, that Karen has asked you to look at, whether you want to look at other types of frontline workers. The other thing that, um, I have not had a chance to, um, really think about in this context, context is, um, what the role of the vaccines play, because the vaccines are so new, the way they're rolling out, most of the, of the grocery store workers are, from what I understand, currently now vaccinated, but that's a new development. And for a lot of the communities that adopted these ordinances, they probably were not, or, or, uh, did not yet have access to those vaccines. Um, so a, a lot of the, I think, concerns that we need to think about is whether the vaccine will be effective against the new variants, or, um, a, and whether that presents the same problems that we would be trying to address now. Um, and so that is something that I think we need to look at, just in terms of, um, adopting this, this ordinance now at this time, at a little slightly different stage than the other communities. Um, I think we need maybe to, to clarify that, the role of that as it rolls out. Like, I'm sorry, that doesn't address your, are there certain categories we need to look at question, but um, hopefully this will be useful for the council and its discussion.
Thank you, and thanks for entertaining my question. I didn't know if there was something for us to consider from a legal standpoint, so thank you. Um, let's see, I'll start, uh, with questions from the council, uh, starting with Vice Mayor Watson.
Thanks. So yeah, we received some correspondence from our local grocers, and, um, it sounds like that, for especially for our smaller operators, that this would be really financially detrimental to them. Um, they've really described it, uh, significant pay increases they've been giving to their workers throughout this, and, uh, and also the investments that they've made in worker safety. Um, so I just think it's something that, uh, we really need to take a, a hard look at, um, as we, as we talk about this, is what kind of impacts, uh, this would have to the, especially the, the smaller operators. Um, and I, you know, absolutely think that, um, we gotta give the city attorney more time to just kind of flesh things out, and, um, you know, I know, uh, we have, you know, several lawsuits as it is already that we're dealing with. Um, so I, I think it's something that we also need to keep in mind before we, um, get, yeah, get caught up in something that might add another lawsuit to our, to our belt, I guess.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Um, so just to expand a little bit on what Brett said, I mean, at first glance, you know, I think most of us, we know, or we have friends, family workers, that, you know, are all in, working in these places. It's a small community, so, you know, the idea of, of a raise and, and, you know, not a raise, but, you know, hazard pay for this time and place. It, if, at first glance, it seems like, well, yes, you know, that's something that would be great for people. Um, while some of us were staying at home and afraid to go out, many of those people had to go out to open the store. So on, you know, on that level, I do very much appreciate the risk that they have been putting themselves at. So, you know, those were my, those were my first thoughts, and of course, we've received a lot of input from the community and a lot of workers saying, you know, yeah, that would be great. We, we could, we would appreciate that extra money. On the flip side of that, we have also heard from many of the managers or owners of the local stores, and it's been, um, I think really uplifting to hear that they, a lot of people have been treating their employees while there have been hazard pay raises given, um, scheduling accommodations made. I mean, I think we, we forget to, um, sometimes as consumers, what the owners of businesses do have to go through to keep their businesses open. Um, you know, working around people's schedules. A lot of people of owners have been considerate of when employees have not wanted to come into work in, in fear of that, and not forced them to, which I appreciate. Working, also working around, um, school schedules for parents so that they can be home with their children and implementing safety measures at work. So I guess what, what I'm trying to get at is, I, I think that our community, at, at first glance, this is all just really new upon us since last week, but from what we're seeing, has done a good job of trying to protect their employees and keep their spaces safe and to value them, um, and to financially reward them when they can. So, for me, I just think if, if we are, I'm hesitant to move forward with this, just because I think that if it's something we move forward with, we really have, we, we really need to go in depth on, on the financials of some of these businesses that we're talking about. I, I just hesitate to assume that I know more than, than the people operating their businesses, and I would hate for us to lose any of our stores, for people to be out of work because of this. And and it might seem like everybody would be on the same page. Yes, we'd like, um, you know, more pay per hour, but I have spoken to friends, um, a couple people have reached out to me to say, well, you know, yeah, that's a great idea, but I'd rather have my job long-term, I'd rather have the health of the store that I work for, so I don't, I think when you consider the whole picture, there's a really, there's a lot to consider. And if we are going to go down this road, then it needs to be really thorough and really thoughtful in how we do it, so we don't lose, you know, some of our, our precious local businesses.
Let's see, uh, Councilmember Goldstein.
Thanks, um. Yeah, I mean, I think this is an ordinance that it's, we, we might need to do a little more exploration on, but it is something that I do support. I've talked this week, it's been a pretty fast turnaround, I know, but I've talked this week with, um, employees and, um, managers. Um, I really appreciate every single person. I know we all got a lot of emails this week and phone calls, and I really appreciate every single person, no matter your stance on this, reaching out, um, so quickly and giving us your opinion, because we, that's how we move forward with things, is we hear from you. Um, so I, I do really want to say thank you to everybody who reached out, and I, it was a lot of people, so I really appreciate that. Um, and, uh, but yeah, hearing, I think, from employees, um, about the fear that they've experienced this year. Um, you know, when you sign up to work in a grocery store, you don't sign up to be working in a hazardous condition. And so I, I do want to make note of that, that working in the middle of a pandemic, that's scary and dangerous. That's not something that you think you're going to be doing when you agree to work at a grocery store. Um, and so I, I would like to see a recognition of that type of sacrifice, um, that has kept our community fed all year. Um, I'm extremely privileged. My day job outside of City Council allows me to work from home. Um, and so I, I have not had to be in that situation, and I want a recog, I would like to see a recognition of the people that have had to be in that situation this year. Um, and so I, I do understand everything that, um, Councilmember Atkins Salazar is saying. We have a lot of really precious, wonderful local grocery stores, um, that we also want to safeguard, and so, um, I'm definitely open to exploring options, um, to make sure that we're, we're protecting those businesses as well. Um, but I think that ensuring that the people are working, are making a wage that, um, accommodates for the sacrifices that they've made, um, maybe helps them if they have had to take more days off for whatever reason, uh, you know, childcare or whatever due to the pandemic. Um, I think that's really necessary. Um, I know there was a list of questions you asked, uh, Karen, and I, I wrote down a few things. I hope I, I remember them all, but you had asked a little bit of guidance. Um, I, to me, it makes most sense to go with number of employees as opposed to the size of the store. Um, but I, I'm not particularly picky on that aspect. I would say we should look to what other communities have done. Um, I, honestly, I would say, why not throw drugstores in with this as well? Um, if we're, if we are talking about, you know, this type of work, it's very similar work, um, and it's also a necessity to our community. It provides us with things we need. Um, and so recognition for those employees too, to me, makes sense. Um, and then, um, there was mention of that many stores are already, um, providing some type of hazard pay, and I'd be very comfortable, so like, let's say we do go forward with like, something like four dollars an hour, but a store is already providing two, that we, those stores only need to provide an additional two dollars an hour, um, not four on top of the two. Um, I think things like that could be a way to find a middle ground, um, and kind of balance interests in this. Um, I, I don't think that I answered all your questions, Karen, I'm sorry. Um, but, uh, happy to continue giving guidance, and I would really like to see this further explored. Thanks. Oh.
Quick, share them on the screen.
Oh, thanks, um. Oh, maybe, let's see.
Pretty good.
I don't know. Yeah, I think maybe I did get it. Yeah, and then the duration is something I think we just have to continue, uh, exploring. I don't think we can make a decision like so quickly on that. Uh, so I think that was all for me, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Schaefer.
Great. Um, well, then I might just, yeah, start by answering some of these questions, uh, for you, Karen, and then I can kind of move on to just my rationale, I guess. Um, but I definitely agree, uh, a, a lot with, uh, Councilmember Goldstein, I think, because number of employees, I, I, I think what we should go off that, um, just, you know, based off of, I don't know, just the size of Arcata in general, a lot of our stores are probably about the same size, about the same, you know, um, square footage. So I, I imagine number of employees would probably be more impactful, especially, um, looking at those that have, you know, large nationwide chains that are, you know, kind of, at this point in the pandemic, making record profits. Um, and so I would definitely like to see that be number of employees. Um, I also agree that, I think, uh, including some of these, I believe in, in my discussion, um, with some of the folks from the union, that stores that carry at least 15% grocery, which I imagine would include, um, like, for example, like CVS, um, the large drugstore located in Arcata, and I imagine that somebody working at CVS is just at risk and working just as hard, um, as people working at Safeway, for example, and people are patronizing that store just as much, um, and going there just as often, um, as these grocery stores. So I would, you know, really, for, for equity's sake, want to include that as well. Um, and then, as far as duration goes, I, I like, I believe it was said in kind of the draft, um, ordinance that I was looking at, um, 90 days or, uh, upon entering the yellow tier, whichever of those would come first, uh, I would imagine. Just to kind of, that idea of compensating for hazard, um, you know, if we are in a tier that is as low as yellow tier, that hazard might be less apparent, there is less of a hazard at that point, and that, you know, hazard pay would expire at that point. Um, and then, you know, just kind of rationale, um, I, I am an elected official of the people of Arcata, and so, you know, in regard to this ordinance, I was approached by union representatives, and I was approached by actual people who work in these stores. Um, and I will say that I think probably, since, you know, the short time, but since the time I've been on council, I have received almost the most emails from local people who are hardworking and are working at these grocery stores, who have tirelessly been working, shared their stories with me, and shared their experiences, and, you know, said, you know, this ordinance needs to be passed, we need something like this in Arcata. And so, um, you know, the only other public comment that I've really received in opposition to it are people that are owners and managers of these places, which I, I really do want to take their interests in mind, and, you know, I don't know every financial in and out of these businesses and what's going on. But I, I would like to hope that, you know, paying your employees a fair wage for 90 days isn't going to sink a local business. Um, i- if that is the case, and I can see that financial data in front of my face, then I, I would reconsider that. Um, however, you know, I think that honestly, a lot of the people I have heard against this have one thing in mind, which is profit, and making a profit, saying, oh, if we had paid our employees X amount more, we would be breaking even, we wouldn't be making profit. Okay, um, yeah, for 90 days, that, that might, you know, be difficult, and that might be struggle, but it's, you know, I don't know, these, these workers have kept our community going. There are these people that are spending money in our community every day, and you know, I think, looking at it from a worker's point of view, um, those are the people that this is going to impact the most, and it's going to impact their daily lives the most. Um, and it's also, I, I guess, and this answers your question on that list as well, Karen, it's not my intent to pile more on stores that are already doing and providing this for employees. If we decide two dollars an hour, three dollars an hour extra for these small grocers, and they're already paying two, what, one dollar more, or if they're already at the level, you know, that, I, I don't want to tack on extra, anything like that. Um, but, yeah, and so I think that pretty much just sums it up for me. Um, and, and that also, uh, just to touch on vaccine rollout a little bit too, and that it has been somewhat slow and somewhat limited, and that grocery workers have just started being able to get their, remember, first vaccine. This is, most of the vaccines that are out now are a two-dose, um, and there's still a lot of vulnerability before that second dose, and even a week after that. And so in this window of rolling out, and there also has been a lot of delays, um, for people's second uh, vaccines lately due to shortages. Um, I know, uh, a few teachers that I know have had to put off their second dose, um, just because there have not been enough available for people. So the, yes, grocery workers are getting vaccinated, but I don't think that is a reason to say no to an ordinance like this, so. Um, thank you. I think that's about it.
Well, thank you to my colleagues for all of your comments. Um, I'm sure after public comment, we'll have a lot more to, to discuss. Um, my initial co, my initial question, um, I had an opportunity to, to ask already, um, um, but yeah, I, I think there's a lot more for us to discuss in terms of, uh, of, of the details around this. Um, in reading the, the other ordinances, um, I think what's being proposed- Um, in reading the, the other ordinances, um, I think what's being proposed um, is the only one that has something for under 300 employees. Um, what's been passed um, by other cities appear to all have a minimum of 300 employees. Um, and then when I think about that impact locally, we have such a mix um, between those that are, you know, under, you know, 300 or 500 employees and then over. Um, so trying to, to work through that of, that, that balance. Um, I, I know the, the argument um, in a lot of these other ordinances and, and uh, kind of major areas has been around, um, the Brookings Institute's report around the record profits um, that employers, that, you know, grocers that have, you know, 300, 500 more employees, the record profits that we're seeing across the country, um, and how, you know, workers are not uh, you know, seeing that translate into their, their, you know, their pocketbook right now during the pandemic. Um, and we don't have that same type of information for those employers that are less than, than that amount. Um, so I, I understand the rationale um, in, in many cases, um, in communities where there are a lot more grocers that have those larger numbers of employees and we do have just more of a mix here locally. So um, I'm going to open it up to uh, public comment. Um, and I imagine we'll have uh, still some good deliberation um, afterwards as well. So uh, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do have public comment. At this point, we have three speakers indicating four. So the first one is a screen um, named call in user three. Can you go ahead, phone caller?
And just a reminder, public comment, folks will have two minutes. Thank you.
Um, hi there. I just want to give you a real life scenario. Um, we have a grocery store. Uh, we have about 40 employees. Um, this year to date, we are in a negative 8%. So um, we're not making mass million dollars like the rest of the stores are across the country. Um, with 40 employees, we have actually had to reduce our workforce down to 36. Our normal is 40. Um, if this were to take place, we will have to reduce our workforce down to 40. So we are going to automatically have to let six employees go in order to be able to make a payroll. I'm spending $4,000 a month um, for PPP supplies, um, the cleaning supplies and for uh, for the masks for customers that come into our store for uh, making sure our employees are taken care of. Um, this is such a hard financial burden to smaller stores. We're a standalone store. We don't have other stores. So if you look at the real picture of, yeah, we're not multimillion dollar uh, businesses here. Um, we are, it's a small town. And so the fact that we, you know, we're down 8% for the year, we're not up massive money um, will only cause us to have to reduce those people. And I have a great team. I don't know who I would even let go. Um, and to be able to have to let go people for a six year or 90 days, it does make a big difference. It's not like I'm gonna, I won't go under for the 90 days, but I will have to reduce my staff and I will probably have to work 14, 20 hour days myself just to make up for those people that I have to reduce their hours. So the fact is that you have so many smaller businesses here in, in town versus only having, you know, we, we don't have just Safeways and Winco's. We have small standalone stores here that you can't take the big profits that they're making across the nation and think that these stores and think that these stores are making those profits.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Next, we have Mario. Can you go ahead, please, Mario? You have two minutes.
Can you unmute, Mario?
I apologize for that. I hadn't seen the screen yet. Thank you.
Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, council members and mayor. Uh, my name is Mario Fernandez. I'm an organizer and researcher with United Food and Commercial Workers Local Five. Uh, we recognize that some grocers and businesses provided a small window of economic recognition and relief to their workforce in the form of hero or hazard pay last year. And that lasted anywhere between two to three months before drying up as the summer ended, despite record profits from grocers. Uh, these are workers that would simply reinvest in their community and drive our local economic engine as we remain under these pandemic guidelines. Uh, you may hear of potential store closures. Uh, those really have only occurred in Southern California with only one national chain, Kroger, who has shared that they have seen an 8% growth. Uh, mind you, that is not negative. That is 8% for that particular chain, uh, yet they have chosen to close what they called underperforming stores uh, in a statement that they released. Uh, our grocery workers, uh, like most blue collar workers, however, have faced all the risks during this time with a one in five chance of contracting COVID, according to a study published by the Journal of Occupational and Environmental Medicine, and face the likelihood of 40% increased mortality rate for those working in food and agricultural sector as a result of the COVID-19 uh, pandemic, according to research recently published by the University of California, San Francisco. Simply put, these are not workers who can work from home and whose essential work remains unrecognized. Uh, lastly, it'll be months before the vaccine becomes wildly available to the extent of grocery workers having an opportunity to receive it. Uh, they do have an opportunity under 1B, you know, the group that they're currently within. The problem is the availability and the accessibility. And while it would not alleviate the risk, it would reflect, like we've had council members uh, put tonight, that it would reflect the essential quality of the work that they have performed, you know, sometimes, not always, but with inadequate access to personal protective equipment. Uh, I urge you, please pass this hazard pay ordinance for grocery workers and retail drug workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a phone caller with the last number 7459. Please go ahead. You can unmute yourself. No? Okay, we'll come back to you. Uh, John, can you go ahead, please?
Uh, thank you. Uh, my name is John Fromm. I'm the North Coast Director for United Food and Commercial Workers Local Five. I'm also the President of the Central Labor Council. Um, I just want to point out a couple of things that we're suggesting for the ordinance. Uh, we did suggest that it go to uh, a minimum of 90 days or to the yellow tier. Uh, I want to reiterate uh, what council member Sarah uh, mentioned uh, regarding the vaccination rollout. Um, the county actually estimates it's going to take a couple of months until we get all the grocery workers vaccinated. Our members have not all been vaccinated and they are continuing to show up to work on a regular basis. Uh, we hope that changes and increases, but they are going to continue to show up uh, under these circumstances. Uh, we have suggested an ordinance that does take into account smaller employers and we suggested starting at 26. Uh, maybe 50 is a better number. I'm not sure. Uh, but that's up for you guys to look at. Um, what I would like to say is, um, you know, grocery workers have continued to provide essential services in the face of this risk with the added stresses of childcare and instructional schools being closed. They don't have the option of working from home. Um, bars and restaurants have been closed, so grocery stores have re- unprecedented profits during this pandemic. Yet they have failed to share those with those who have taken the greatest risk to generate the profits. Uh, hazard pay ended in July, uh, and we would suggest and recommend that if anyone actually is paying hazard pay now, that we do credit that towards whatever that you guys hopefully vote for. Um, and I do want to point out by making this small temporary investment in workers, you're investing in your community. And as we reopen and it expands, those folks are going to be spending money here locally in your community because that's where the money stays. Um, and I just want to point out that when employers choose not to do the right thing, then the role of government is to correct that, just like minimum wage laws, workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, and even building codes. Um, last, I'd like to finish by saying, there is never a bad time to correct a wrong. And I thank you in advance for correcting this wrong by voting in favor of grocery worker hazard pay. I remain available to discuss this further with any council member. Happy St. Patrick's Day and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I'll try phone caller again, um, that ending in 7459. Please go ahead. Okay, um, we might be having some difficulties there. How about um, Kay Lennox?
I'd like to start tonight by thanking all of you, uh, mayor, city council members, for putting this item on the agenda. My name is Kevin Lennox and I'm a union rep for the United Food and Commercial Workers Local Five. Locally, I represent Co-op, Safeway, and Rite Aid employees. Over the past 13 months, I've seen how this pandemic has affected my members um, while enduring the constant stress of possible COVID-19 exposure for themselves and those around them. They've also managed this, the added stress of tourists, mask deniers, school closures, homeschooling, and a shameful level of federal incompetence. Yet they keep showing up every day, continuing to put product on the shelves for us. This, despite the fact that grocery workers have received little in the form of compensation and appreciation for it, with most of their employers paying hero or hazard pay for a couple of months at best while making record profits. You may have noticed that I just referred to hazard pay as hero pay. Initially, that's what we called it because early on, we recognized and appreciated the fact that grocery workers are keeping us fed. I'm not sure what has happened to change the way we think about grocery workers, but any expectation that grocery workers should show up and be happy that they have a job is just wrongheaded and needs to change. That change, for Humboldt County at least, hopefully starts tonight with the passage of this ordinance. It's time to give these heroes the premium pay they deserve. I urge this council to support our heroes by passing this ordinance. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, checking a couple more moments if there is any further public comment on this item. Not seeing any further public comment, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, let me bring it back to the, the council for, for any, you know, comments um, or a motion to discuss. We'll start with Vice Mayor Watson.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think, uh, you know, like, it's, it's been noted here. I think we definitely have a lot more um, conversation to have on this and some of the questions I'd like, uh, some information I'd like, so I can, um, I don't know, think about this more, is a, a list of all the grocery stores. We have an arcade that this would impact. I also would like to see how many employees does each one of those grocery stores have. Um, and then I would also like to give the opportunity to each one to demonstrate the financial impact to their business. Um, just to make sure we're hearing all sides of it and considering all the information. Um, and I, you know, and like, like I said earlier, most importantly, I think if we do decide to uh, put something forward, that we really need to be confident, whatever that is, isn't going to result in litigation. Um, again, you know, I, I think we've got enough on our plate in that regards. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, council member Atkins Salazar.
Um, no, I, I'm just, I mean, to be honest, I'm just struggling, you know, with this one. It's hard. Um, I, I do definitely think that the, our grocery workers and pharmacy workers are heroes um, as well as so many other people through this pandemic. It's just been, it's been hard on a lot of people. So this is, this is a tough one. I'm, um, yeah, I, if we are going to move forward, I would just want to see some more specifics and some assurances that, that what we're doing is, I'm just hesitant to meddle in the finances of businesses that we're not 100% sure of. Um, you know, we're, we're hearing from third parties regarding this and um, I just need more, uh, more assurances that this can be absorbed financially by the, the smaller local stores. So, that's all.
Okay, uh, council member Goldstein.
Um, yeah, I really appreciate everyone who called in and spoke. Um, you all shared really important impactful things. Um, I think that I understand where you're coming from, council member Atkins Salazar, but I do think that I'd like to state that I don't think it's our job as a council to protect the business interests um, of business owners in our community. It's our job to protect the interests of our community as a whole. Um, and so while I don't want to see any businesses harmed, I do want to focus on, I, I personally feel that we need to focus on the needs of, of all of our community members and not just worry about um, business owners because we're, we're, we work in government. That's not our job. Um, and that's not what we're elected to do. Um, we're not here to safeguard business interests. Um, and so I, I understand hesitations. I really do. Um, and I have my own concerns about businesses in Arcata. Um, but I also have a lot of concerns for what these employees have gone through and um, have given up this year to ensure that our needs are met as a community. Um, I think that being said, uh, I think it was John had mentioned that potentially we change the ordinance um, as it's proposed from um, looking at businesses that are 26 employees and more up to 50. Um, I think that that again could be a good compromise base. Um, the business owner we heard from tonight has a really, it sounds like she has a very, very small business. Um, and that would making this a little bit, go with a little bit larger um, number of employees might uh, help out a lot um, with, with some of these really small businesses that are struggling. Um, so that being said, just because there were uh, questions asked, I have my definitive answers now. Um, so I would say um, duration would be 90 days or the yellow tier. Um, I would say I'm in favor of a hazard pay credit. Um, I'd say we should look at number of employees um, to gauge this and I'd like to include drugstores. Um, and then, yeah, again, I would say we should go with businesses that are, are 50 people, 50 employees and over. So, thanks.
And if I could just, you know, if I could just add back in, um, no, you know, the businesses themselves, you're right, we don't represent, but we do represent the people that work there. Um, as you guys are pointing out, who will be affected if, if their companies are not able to pay these and jobs are lost, as well as the business owners who are citizens of our town. Because there are a lot of business owners that are also our constituents. So, you know, I think we have to look at the whole people, uh, the whole process. I don't want to pit it as, and I'm sure you don't either, you know, as business owners versus um, individuals. I know that's, you know, that's not our intention. And I guess I'm just leaning a little harder in, not in favor, but just uh, I'm, I'm looking at the side of the business owners a little bit closer here because I do own a business. It's not a grocery store. And um, you know, it's, it's totally un, unrelated to this, except for the fact that I know what it's like to have a small business and to have, you know, to be in control of those finances and be able to sustain my business. So if somebody were to come from the outside and want to mandate something, um, they'd need to really have a good understanding of what it's like to run and own my business and not just in a little snapshot in time, but over a long period of time. And so I feel like we're being given snapshots of profitability and I, I'm, I mean, I just want to say, I am for people over profits. But we also, we have to be able to maintain our, our businesses and there's all, yeah, so I'll just, I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you. Um, council member Schaefer.
Yeah, um, I definitely want to say that I agree with council member Watson, that I would like to see those numbers just on which stores would be affected and how many employees have, um, those stores have, just to be able to make an informed decision about that kind of number that we were talking about. Is it 26? Is it 50? Is it 100 of how many, you know, employees these businesses have? So I would like to see um, those numbers as well. Um, and I would like to move forward with something. Um, and if it doesn't include these small grocers, then so be it. You know, if it only targets um, these larger businesses, these uh, more multinational chains, then I, I would be happy to see at least just that, you know, it's, you know, at least something that we can move forward in the right direction. Um, if the consensus of the council is to, you know, make it be at that higher number. Um, doing that is better than doing nothing, in my opinion. Um, I do have a couple of questions that are probably more legally questions um, for you, Nancy. But so if we um, decided maybe to make the decision that we would only include uh, grocers that are part of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, is that a possibility? Or are there ramifications for that with like collective bargaining laws and um, with, you know, laws surrounding unions? Um, and then I guess kind of goes into my second question is, and if a business decides not to pay it, do we have any, what legal power do we have to enforce it? do we have any, what legal power do we have to enforce it?
Sorry. One of the issues that has been raised in litigation is an equal protection allegation that it is discriminatory because it only applies to this very narrow class of essential workers, the grocery store employees. So there is, the, the, the court has only sort of addressed that issue. And as I said, it's, it's an evolving kind of get back and forth in litigation. So that is an area that I need to explore further, that if there is a problem in looking only at the grocery and the stores that have 15%, for example, of grocery sales. So that is a good point that you raise, and that will be something that I have to look at closer. So I hope that was your question, sort of.
Yeah, or if there's just, you know, if we decided to say, okay, our ordinance in Arcata directly affects workers that are part of the, the Local Five United Food Workers. Is, is that possible, you know, because that might, you know, just target some of the larger ones or the ones that are, you know, like the Co-op, for example, employee owned, and I have gotten, you know, pretty much most of the letters of support I have gotten are overwhelming from these union members, from people that work at Safeway and people that work at the Co-op. I haven't heard a lot from workers that work at Murphy's or Wildberries or Ray's. So, you know, I feel like there is definitely a communication going on between the unions and their workers. And if, you know, us getting involved in that, is, is there any legal ramification for that, I guess is what I'm asking.
And, and I'm going to have to just simply punch and say I will have to look into that further because, you know, one of the really big arguments that is raised, if you read the letter from the attorney representing the California grocers, you did.
That's where my question comes from, yeah.
Okay, yeah. And that was addressed in, in a fair amount of substance in, in the, one of the judicial opinions, but there are some gaps that the court acknowledged exist. So I, I will look into that, and that's a very good question. Thank you for articulating it. Your other question was, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to-
Yeah, no, it's okay. Asking too many things at once. I mean, what legal power do we have to enforce this? If a business, you know, decides, no, we're not going to do that. We're just going to keep paying them what we're paying. How do we, do we have an ability to step in or what?
Well, yeah, and, and that raises a question on every ordinance we're always adopting. Like the, the ordinance that was, the, the emergency ordinance that was adopted about two months ago for the, the restaurant delivery services. How do we enforce against DoorDash, for example? So there's a practical component, which is that we are little compared to Safeway Chain, for example, which is big. So we go after them with a little bit of enforcement authority. And they have a lot of resources against us. We could use though, in a more, just to be a little more positive, we could use our administrative citations provisions. And we could also, we, we, you know, we could create a misdemeanor out of this, which gives it a lot more teeth. It's a lot more resource intensive for the city to have to enforce that level of code violation. But there's always that give and take, and I can analyze this more when we bring it back, if the council does decide to, to look at this, to revisit this.
Great, thank you, Nancy. And so, yeah, I guess just overall, I, I would like to see us move forward with anything rather than nothing. If we kind of decide as a council that we, the consensus is, you know, if it's not going to pass, if we decide to include all, all levels of grocers, but if we have enough consensus that, you know, if we're just focusing on these multinational chains, then, you know, so be it. But I would like to see us move forward with some iteration of this. So, thank you.
Councilmember Atkin Salazar, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I just had a question for, for Emily or Sarah. I just wanted to get their opinion because I had thought about it that similarly, like what if we just went for the higher number, you know, the 500 employees nationally or bigger? Because those were also, you know, the, the financials that we were more privy to because their public record, right? So, but then how, what do you guys think? How does, how does that make you feel towards, if we were to go in that direction, towards all of the other people that have chosen to work at local stores? So that's where, that's where I kind of got hung up is, you know, is that saying then that we're valuing the people that work at Safeway more so than the people that work at the Co-op? Like, so I just, and I'm, and I'm, I'm asking that like in a genuine way because that's what I was wrestling with. So I would love to hear back from you guys on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in the same boat on that, and that's why I said, you know, I'd rather see something pass rather than nothing. And that's why I did ask the question about, you know, if we could make it that it just focuses on members or, you know, local grocery store workers that are part of the United Food Workers Union. In that case, you know, because I would feel bad. I've gotten a lot of emails and I've talked to a lot of people that work at the Co-op. So I would feel really bad if we went forward on an ordinance and it didn't include them because they've been very passionate about that and have, you know, spoken that they, they think that this ordinance is very helpful and that it is a great idea. And so that's why I did ask the question if, you know, we could tailor it in some way that it was including at least those unionized workers and, but, you know, it, it does kind of just go with the sense of, you know, we need to, I, I'd like to look at those numbers, I guess, that, that Councilman Watson brought up just to know, you know, how many people work at these stores? Are they also maybe the information are, have they been getting hazard pay? I know that like Murphy's has been giving their employees hazard pay. How much is that? Would we be piling on top of that, you know? And just kind of get a little bit more of that, that data, I guess, is, is where I'm sitting right now to feel really comfortable making a decision, especially like you were saying, Stacy, for the, the local, these stores that we, that only exist in Arcata, so. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, oh, all right. Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that you brought up a really, really great question because I, I feel very torn about it too. This isn't about punishing businesses, and so it's about honoring employees, right? And so it, it, I do agree that while maybe Safeway can afford this better than our local stories, we do want to, you know, we do want to honor the people who have chosen to work locally at our local businesses and be really part of that, you know, that heart of our community. So I, I agree, it is, I, I, it's a very complex topic, I think. And so I appreciate you bringing up that question. Because I think it is easy just to say, oh, we'll just go with the bigger stores. But we don't want to forget about employees of our local stores, and we don't want to put a value on working for Safeway versus Wildberries or a smaller store.
Yeah, it seems like until we get that data, how many employees each store has, it's going to be hard to, to settle on a number because we're not, we're not going to know whether or not it's gonna, who is going to affect. So I do appreciate wanting to move something forward. But, uh, yeah, that's, that's my thought on that.
I just wanted to add a few comments, things that have been kind of weighing on my heart relating to this. I think, you know, in hearing all of my colleagues here, I think there's no question that there is a deep appreciation for our grocery store workers and folks that really have been on the front lines of essential workers. And I think what has been weighing on me is thinking about all the workers that do not have this fantastic like representation that UFCW Local Five that you've been able to provide. I think about the workers who are not public facing and yet working in agriculture, manufacturing and production experience high risk, and we have seen outbreaks across the country and in our own community that are not covered by this ordinance that's being proposed. And I, I think, I think the city attorney bringing up one of the arguments in the litigation of the narrow scope of this, it, it's something that weighs on me because I think, I think it starts to get much, much bigger than we could ever imagine to try and rectify the risks that workers, that we may never hear from. People that may be working multiple jobs, there may be language barriers. There are people that are also putting themselves at risk to do work that is unseen. And so for me, it, it, I, I, I understand that the desire for us to, to move forward on this, and yet I also start to feel like this is, that the scope of the issue is much, much bigger than what our grocery workers are experiencing. The income, I mean, we are, we are trying to address income inequality that is at a much larger systemic level than, than we can put Band-Aids over. So I'm not to say that we should not do anything, but I, I feel like I had to articulate it because it, I would say it's keeping me up at night, but my baby's keeping me up at night and I'm thinking about it then. And, and, you know, I appreciate the, the, the dialogue around, you know, business interests versus protecting workers. And I have to say, I, I do lean more where Councilmember Atkin Salazar is in the sense of our, you know, our smaller employers do not have the same flexibility financially. I mean, I don't have the data, but I think we can all say with confidence that we're not talking millions, billions of dollars like we are seeing with employers that have 500 or more employees nationally, which has been for the most part the baseline that these ordinances across the state have included. So what we are talking about is a much different framework, and I understand it because we, we are not LA. We are not San Francisco. We have a great vitality of local businesses here. And we are so fortunate to have smaller grocery stores here in a way that many of these other communities are not blessed with. Like we are lucky and, but, but then it brings up this dilemma for me of how we impact those that do not have the same resources as these larger employers. Like just actually, they do not have the same resources. And there, there is a much higher risk for those smaller employers than there are for the larger ones. And we can, we can debate what, where that threshold is. Is it 300? Is it 500? You know, but there is a difference. There is a very big difference. And I, and I don't think it's wrong to think about the impact to a smaller employer and how that impacts the workers that we very well want to protect. I do not want to, you know, Kroger's, you know, throwing out stuff in Southern California about shutting stores down. You know, that, that doesn't sway me because it's like we don't have a Kroger's here. And I get that's a scare tactic, but I think there is a real concern of, you know, I'm, I'm the daughter of a small, small business woman. You know, it's like my, my family's livelihood was, was around small business. So I, I personally have experienced what it's like when your parents are struggling to meet payroll for their employees. Like I know what that can feel like. So I, I want to be empathetic to that, not to be protecting people's major profits and anything like that, but recognizing that the profits may be minimal and help to create some financial stability in a time that has not been very stable. So, um, you know, I think there's an openness on this council to, to find some compromise solution. I think, I hear that openness from this council. I just needed to articulate some thoughts that were kind of weighing on me that I think, and for me, influence my approach and, you know, how I'm, I'm going to inevitably vote on this issue. And I wanted to be transparent about my particular thought process. And it may not factor in into anyone else's decision-making, but I need to say my piece on it. So is there a motion from this council?
What, what would the motion be? Since we're not going to move forward with the ordinance tonight. Well, it doesn't sound like anyone wants to move forward without further exploration. I think all five of us agree on that.
Yeah, I mean, and my question is like, because usually we have like an actual ordinance in front of us. So that's why I thought tonight was maybe just a little slightly more of a discussion, just because we don't actually have anything drafted or created in front of us. But I guess then would the motion in a sense be like, I would like to go forward in seeing an ordinance that addresses these things? Is that like, I don't know what we're looking for then? Or is that just, you know, time for the next council meeting, I guess?
I, I, I think it's up to you in terms of a motion. It could be something of that nature. It could be directing staff to provide more information. It could be a combination of those two. I, I mean, so it really is the, the pleasure of this council in terms of what type of motion you want to entertain, understanding that we obviously don't have something to pass tonight or introduce tonight. But you have a couple of different directions you could go in terms of a motion.
Yeah, I mean, all, if no one else wants to, I'll go ahead and make a motion to direct staff to gather more information to answer the council's questions tonight and to come back to us at a later date with that information.
That works. I'll second.
Could, could I make a motion that has a little bit more stuff in it that perhaps then also maybe we direct staff to, to draft, help, you know, draft an ordinance that could be then worked with to modify these numbers that we are speaking about, which we want more data about, perhaps to, to address these two tiers? And then if we decide that we want to remove the smaller tier out of, out of, you know, after seeing this data, that is, could that be a motion as well?
I think you could totally do that. I just, to me, it's just not really clear what those specifics, what we would direct staff to. I feel like we don't have that specific information yet to give them something more concrete. And please, you know, if the council member feels differently, please chime in.
I, I just, I, I would like to, because, because I don't know, this is something that's been brought up in public comment that it's, and a lot of people have been like, oh, you're just doing this now, like, you know? And so the fact that there might be not necessarily urgency, but, you know, especially, especially because we have, there's five Wednesdays in this month, so we're not going to meet again until the first week of April. And, and that, you know, in the sense that maybe at our next meeting, there would be something that we could actually enact and vote on would be what I would like to see. And so in, in the sense that I, I guess, going with Councilmember Watson's motion that I guess we want to have staff bring us back this data. And then at that date, could we then move forward with something if we so desire, even if there's not an ordinance in front of us that, you know, is, is actually written? I, I, I'm just, you know, questioning the process here about just how, how many meetings it takes for, you know, this to move forward. So.
Nancy, do, welcome to jump in if you want, Nancy, in terms of timing. Because we should differentiate between an emergency ordinance and kind of a standard ordinance too.
And one, well, okay, so the, the urgency ordinance is what we've used a few times during the, the pandemic to implement immediate legislation. And it requires very specific legislative findings of the immediate need and the need to preserve the public health and safety. What I have seen is that some communities are adopting it as an urgency, immediately effective ordinance, and simultaneously introducing a regular ordinance, same language, but they're going through the, the, the more protracted process because the, the urgent, the use of an urgency ordinance is actually confined to very specific situations. So if it gets challenged and it's not legitimate, then you can fall back on the original ordinance. That, that is a little bit of background, but I think to Councilmember Schaefer's question about can we develop a draft ordinance? I guess as a matter of just sort of, you know, the Rosenberg's rules, the motion was made by Councilmember Watson, and it was seconded. And so the question is whether Councilmember Watson will amend his motion because that's the motion on the table, and then whether the second or will. Okay, so that, that's just the procedural nonsense about that you, you kind of need to go through those hoops. Logistically, practically, in terms of being able to pull together an ordinance that has blanks that can be inserted, we can try, if that is the council's desire, to bring forward that kind of language. I, you know, if it, if we can, after our research, develop an ordinance that is adequately complete, but for the little blanks, fill in the, the blank as you have your discussion, then I'm comfortable with you if that is the council's desire to take action, to adopt it right then. But if there's further discussion and, and direction, then we would want to take the ordinance- But if there's further discussion and, and direction, then we would want to take the ordinance back and rework it and then bring that back at a subsequent meeting. So that's sort of how this rolls out. Unfortunately, it takes a little bit of time.
To me, there's still the big question of whether or not we're going to get sued over this. I felt like we haven't really talked about that that much. So, and that, that's just something I'm always concerned about. We direct staff, we, to invest staff time, which is precious resource. And, you know, it's, it's going to cost us to develop this ordinance. If we're just going to invest in something that we're just going to turn around and get sued over. So, I mean, that's just another component, I guess, I'd like to get a better sense of before we start using resources.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Yeah, along the line of what, what Brett was bringing up, that's a, a question I have too is, I think that, you know, if we were to direct, first of all, I don't know. I mean, I guess staff can reach out to the business owners and ask for them, but that's pretty much all they can, they can do. It's up to the business owners or managers to provide that information for us then to look at. I mean, I, I think we could probably all agree that if we were to get all that information and it was accurate and we looked over it, we probably would see a really big difference between the smaller local businesses and the big one. Okay? So if we, you know, if we make that assumption and take it to the next step, then would we be willing to go forward and make an ordinance that only encompassed it, encompassed, excuse me, a small portion of our population? So, and that's the part that I'm struggling with. Sophia did a much better job of kind of reiterating, of explaining that and expanding on that than what I've been able to do. But that's, that's my hesitation. And so I wouldn't want us to spend a lot of staff's time and energy researching something if it's only going to go to, if we're not going to be able to, you know, if we, if it's not going to be able to pass. And I'm not saying whether it can pass or not, but I think we just need to think about that. Are we willing to kind of split this and only give hazard pay to a small portion of the community? If we do anything, you know? One thing I just want to bring up that we haven't talked about, and maybe this isn't something for us to figure out tonight if we're gonna, if the motion does move forward to bring this back after some more research, but we also haven't talked about the dollar amounts for the respective tiers. And I think that has to probably be considered. And, and in terms of if we were to pass an ordinance, obviously we would need to land on particular numbers. But, but I think that probably is something worth talking about when talking about these different size employers. So I, I, I don't have a, you know, a, a recommendation at, at this point for that, but perhaps that plays into the conversation as well. I don't know if other jurisdictions have looked at percentages versus solid dollar amounts. I don't know if that makes a difference at all, but that's actually something maybe if in terms of research, I think would be good to know is, is there any legal reason why it can't be a percentage increase versus a solid dollar amount? I'm just trying to think of other possibilities that would inform our discussions.
I, I would add to that though. I think a percentage might get, I don't know, dangerous. It would actually maybe do the reverse of what we are hoping because I feel like the, the larger employer might pay their workers less than what the, and again, I want those numbers of how much, you know, on, on average, these employees are paid. But that the larger chain corporation might pay their employees less than what a small independent local business does. So then in that case, you know, that percentage for, you know, if it's across the border or whatever, it, it might end up being more for the ones that are already making more. So. It's, I don't know. But I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with Councilmember Watson's motion to, to, you know, move forward with more, more research and more information to help us make an informed decision in this case.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, I, I think overall, we really just all are asking for more clarity and information. Because I think, I mean, I like to think at the end of the day, we're all, we all are actually kind of on the same page, even if we have slightly differing views. I think that we all have the best interests of our community as a whole at heart. And I, I think it's really hard to make a decision for any of us without being completely informed. So, yeah, so I mean, I guess that would, I don't know if I have any ideas about an, or, you know, ordinance language or anything that we would like to see next time. But I, I would like to see more information to make a better informed decision.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion before we call the vote by roll call? Okay. Let's see, Vice Mayor Watson?
Hi.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Hi.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Hi.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes. Well, thank you, everyone, for the, for the discussion. Thank you to those that submitted their comments to us. And this will come to a future agenda very soon, I'm sure. Okay, next on our agenda, we have oral and written communications. I think we have, hopefully that community member stuck it out. This time is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you're on the Zoom webinar or press star nine if you're on a phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes. When it is your time for public comment, the clerk will unmute you and invite you to speak. Do we have any public comment?
Taking a moment to double check. At this point, we do not.
I don't know if this is unorthodox, but I actually have a, a text message that was sent to me by that caller. I, I, I knew her. And so she, she sent me kind of what she was going to say if, if you would like me to read it out loud. I don't know if that's unorthodox or not, if we do that, but she, she was also concerned about the, the marijuana grow over in, in that area. So.
Um, I don't know what our, like, our practice is on that, Nancy. Is there any? I, that's the first time that's come up for me. So.
Yeah, yeah. Text messages during a public meeting are generally considered absolutely to be avoided because there are actual public records and people can request them. And it's just so much easier to just not turn your phone, your, your message, your cellphone off. But.
During our, our break that she had said she was trying to get in. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Anyway, it's up to the, it's up to the council. I think it sounds like Sarah sort of conveyed it, but it's up to the council. I think.
We had somebody just come in as call and user four. If that is the same caller and you wanted to raise your hand, I'm not sure. Does not look like that is the same caller.
It looks like it. Yeah, caller that just came in, are you wanting to speak? If so, this is public comment and you can raise your hand. Yeah, I, I don't think we have any. Nope, no one's raising their hand.
Okay, so I, I guess perhaps for the person, they could email the council if they wanted to, to relay that to us.
Oh, we do, we do have the phone caller now raising a hand if you, okay. Please go ahead, caller. You'll have two minutes. You can unmute yourself.
Hello.
Oh, there you go. Yes, thank you. You'll have two minutes.
Hi, this is Joanne McGary. I was hoping I could get on in the earlier part. But I just want to say three different things on three different subjects. The first is that I had the opportunity to attend via YouTube the wonderful Fifth Annual Zero to Fierce Women's Festival that the Arcata Playhouse held last week during International Women's Week Day and Women's History Month and all. And it is a really, really stellar, ongoing, wonderful program that they put together, especially this year. I think with equity in the foremost and activism is the theme. And I just want to congratulate the Arcata Playhouse, who also received the Business of the Year Award from the Chamber of Commerce for reminding us of the importance of the arts in our community and of the really thoughtful ways that they put together a presentation. So that was my first thing I wanted to acknowledge to you leaders here in the community. Secondly, I was unfortunately part of the witness to the stabbing on last Friday of Jeff Pauly. And it was fairly traumatizing and I appreciate the ride home I got from a city employee because I was a little shaken. And it reminded me of my arrival here in Arcata back in 2012 at the Oyster Festival where I too was assaulted, unfortunately not hurt. But it was during the Oyster Fest drunkenness and everybody, you know, I was getting, trying to get out of the way. And anyway, it was a reminder that Arcata has some wonderful things going on, but we can always do a whole lot better. And in terms of these, this violence that I've experienced both nine years ago and last week, I think we really need to start looking at things. And finally, climate change crisis. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
All right, one last check if there is any interest in public comment. I am not seeing any further public comment.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay, next we'll move to council and staff reports. Are there any staff updates?
I know, just a reminder that we have goal setting next week on the 25th to hopefully finalize up some goals that extend staff will start to build your budget and draft budget around. And if you haven't seen the press release, it is a sad day for Arcata in terms of really losing Pacific Outfitters as a result of COVID-19 here in Arcata. On the Good News Size is appreciation for Humboldt State really stepping up to invest in our retail community. And they will be moving their bookstore off campus and into the Pacific Outfitter space right in the downtown area. So a really nice connection between the kind of community and the university around that bookstore in downtown. So we will hopefully be welcoming that soon.
Great, thank you. Let's see, Vice Mayor Watson?
Nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Um, no, nothing to report. Councilmember Goldstein?
Nothing to report, thanks.
Councilmember Schaefer?
I know it's getting late, but one, one small victory. I did sit in on Arcata House Partnerships Board Meeting on Monday and they are all moved into their new offices in Valley West and their staff is pretty much fully vaccinated for those who have wanted it. And they are making that, you know, outreach in Valley West and that community and have begun their work over there. So just wanted to let the council know if people hadn't heard that yet. So that's very exciting for, for Arcata House.
Great. Just wanted to give an update for Humboldt Waste Management Authority. We are currently in the, the hiring and recruitment process for a new executive director. So more to come on that, but I think the application period recently closed and we have a whole process. And the board will be doing interviews in the near future. So just wanted to keep you, keep you all posted on that because that'll be a big, big transition. So. Thank you, everyone. Let's see, dates, dates of future meetings. Karen already touched on it. We have our second steady session of two to set the council's goals. Next Thursday, March 25th at 6:00 PM via teleconference. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.